All right, we'll reconvene. Actually, yeah, reconvene. We'll start our committee, the whole meeting. I'll call the orders for today. And today we are discussing our West Jordan Justice Court. And Alan Doyd.
Let me introduce him. Can I do that?
Yes.
So, so you know what Judge Coons has announced his retirement in January? And so there's, there's some options for the council to consider. And so Jim Peters is the executive director of the Administrative Office of the Courts, nicknamed AOC, Administrative Office of the Courts, and his assistant, and we'll have to introduce her.
Jim Zimmerman, she's Deputy Justice Court Administrator.
So they are here to just present, I think, four different options that the council can entertain. It's just for dialogue. So with that, you've got the clicker and down arrow will. Yeah, this is the next. You should be able to just down arrow and it should.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And thanks for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure to be with you. And I have just a few slides that we'll go through very quickly so that we can then get to your questions and any discussion that you might want to have. Alan introduced us. We're, we're both from the Administrative Office of the Courts. Jim Peters, Justice Court Administrator. Kim Zimmerman, Deputy Justice Court Administrator. And, and the fun thing about this tonight is that we're actually both West Jordan residents. So we haven't, I, I presented to a number of cities at this point where they're looking to be in between judges, but it's never hit home quite like it does tonight. So this is fun. And it'll be interesting to, to hear your discussion about this. As Alan indicated, there's several options that you have at this point. These are always on the table, but when a judge is about to leave the bench, they're, they become a lot more relevant. One option that you would have would be to dissolve the court. And, and I'll talk through that just briefly, just like negotiating an interlocal agreement with the neighboring jurisdiction. That's happening in very few places here in the county, actually, but for example, Cottonwood Heights uses the Holiday Justice Court for its, its, its justice court work. But the thing that we'll spend the most time on is continuing the justice court. And I want to walk through the process of what it takes to replace a judge. You'll be surprised at how quickly the timelines add up to get us to six or seven months worth of process. And so I want to alert you to that so that you're aware of the process from the outset and you can ask questions about it and understand what your involvement would be going forward. And then, of course, we'll take questions at the end, or if you have them in the middle, that's, that's fine too. So let me just talk about dissolving the court. This is, all the stuff that I'm going to talk about tonight is almost exclusively statutory. And the first thing would be when the city decides that it wants to dissolve its justice court, and you've seen this with South Jordan. They first have to provide notice to the judicial council. There's a runway that's, that's built into the statute there that for a court this size would be two years out before you can dissolve a justice court. But there's also a statute on the books that says if there are exigent circumstances that, that warrant closing sooner, then the judicial council can shorten that timeframe. But the thing that's critical to understand about dissolving a justice court versus going into an interlocal agreement is that, and I can't speak for the judicial council, but in all likelihood, you would not get the court back. Once you dissolve it, it's, it's almost likely gone forever.
Why is that? Why, I mean, obviously, it's an issue of time and people, but let's say, not just West Jordan, any city wanted to get it back, why is it so hard to get it back?
Well, because what the statute requires is that you demonstrate a need for the justice court. And if there's a court in Midvale and one in South Jordan and, and all over the place, Taylorsville, then it's, I think it'd be a hard argument to make that West Jordan has to have them, but you could. And in that event, the, the council would approve it. So the, the other option that I mentioned was doing an interlocal agreement, again, Taylorsville, South Jordan, Midvale, something like that. And I mentioned that Cottonwood Heights and the Holiday are doing something similar. You could, you could do the same thing. The judicial council does have to approve it, but the difference is that if you enter into an interlocal agreement and you basically go dormant as your own justice court because you've contracted that out to another jurisdiction, then at the point that that interlocal agreement terminates, and maybe it's written in such a way that you terminate it by its terms, right, or, or the, the time, the, the term lapses or whatever. But then at that point, can petition the judicial council, say, hey, we're ready to go. We want to hire a judge, get staff back and resume operation of the justice court. So you've never lost it because you didn't dissolve it. It just kind of went dormant while you contracted with a neighboring jurisdiction. So that's the difference between dissolving and interlocaling, but I, I think as far as what, what's feasible in your case, probably neither of those first two options make a lot of sense. But again, we can talk more. What I want to do, we're going to talk about continuing operating the justice court. And I thought it would be only fair to advise you as to what you're getting into before you decide to do it, right? There's a statute that, that passed the legislature last session in 2023 that clarifies what a justice court is. And I talked to different cities and counties around the state, and sometimes this makes perfect sense, and sometimes it comes as quite a shock. So I just wanted to tell you what the statute says. It says a justice court is a court of this state. In accordance with, with that statute, it's part of the state judiciary, even though the justice court is funded and staffed by a municipality or a county. And that's where I'll hear from, from people a lot saying, well, we're the ones paying the salary, so of course it's our court. And as our general counsel is fond of saying, justice courts are state courts operated at the local level. So the, the judiciary, the judicial branch is envisioned by our state constitution, exists at the state level. There's a lot of good reasons to run justice courts at the local level, the way we have been. So it's kind of a partnership in that regard. But they're independent from other branches of government for a municipality or county. And so it goes on to say then that a justice court may not be treated as part of the executive or legislative branches or offices of a municipality or a county. And sometimes we'll have court administrators sitting on the mayor's cabinet or will, will be viewed as a department of the executive or something like that. It's just important to recognize the government works best when we have those three branches. They're separate but equal. There's the checks and balances and they're, they're independent from one another, even though they need to work together. And that's, that's what provides for the healthiest system. And the justice courts are no exception. So with that in mind, let me talk about what it takes to continue operating the justice court. And let me just provide a quick overview. You'll see how these timelines add up super quickly. So what we do is we put out a press release that indicates that there is a vacancy in the, in the West Jordan Justice Court coming up. I don't know if you've seen this come through with the bar emails or whatever else, but there's an opening right now in South Salt Lake. We've got one running in Providence. We just built one in Washington City. So they're kind of something that's, that's going on a lot. But what we have to do by statute is run that for 30 days. And then by court rule, if we don't have at least nine applicants, then we have to extend it for, for two more weeks. So that's where we get the 45 days there. Hopefully it would be shorter. But it can, it can run six weeks just to, to run the advertisement, provide the notice that there's an opening. Now ideally at the same time, but sometimes it's not until after. But we put the nominating commission together, and I'll go into more detail in a minute as to what the nominating commission includes and what it does. So that's this next thing. And depending on the availability of everybody, you'll see from where they come, it can be quite the challenge to get everybody to agree on a date that works for, for a meeting. And not just one, but two. When they, when they have their first meeting, they'll get together and review applications. And when they have their second one, they'll actually conduct the interviews. But from the, the first meeting until they finish their work, they've got 45 days. So you can see that right there, we're at least to 90. After they conduct their interviews and they narrow the applicant list down to a shortlist that they want to then send on to the mayor, before he gets the materials, we go out for public comment to make sure that somebody out there doesn't know something that you don't. Because the last thing you want to do is hire a judge that is ultimately going to embarrass the city or not do a good job for you. So there's a public comment period. That goes at least 10 days. But if there's a negative comment that comes in, then we give the applicant an opportunity to respond to it. And then all of that has to go back to the nominating commission to make sure they want to advance the name. But ultimately, they provide a list to the mayor and he has 30 days to make his selection. He'll go over the, the application materials. He may interview. He, he may do additional due diligence from what we conducted beforehand. And then he'll narrow it down to someone that he recommends to all of you. And you all have 30 days from that point to ratify his selection. So you can see as it adds up, it can easily take six months from start to finish to get this done, but even after that, we have to run the new judge through an orientation, unless he's on the bench somewhere else and has already done it. But if not, there's an orientation that takes place typically January, February, somewhere in there. We'll do whatever the city needs. And then we have to, to take the name to the judicial council for certification. So there's a lot of approvals, lots of hoops to jump through on our way to getting Judge Coons' replacement on the bench. So let me just drill down a little bit on advertising the vacancy. Again, that's a statutory.
Yes, sir. On the, on the orientation, does the state require the completion of anything in National Judicial College or is it just a state?
It's one that we put together locally. We do offer opportunities to go back to the National Judicial College. But it's not mandatory. Especially before taking the bench, right? It's typically something that would happen after. So it won't slow down the process at all. This just gives a, a brief overview as to who does what in terms of advertising the position. I put the announcement together and we release it to the press. And we email it to every member of the bar. And we spread it through other appropriate means, which includes me emailing everybody on the justice court bench. And I, I maintain a list of people who have expressed interest in these openings as they come along. So all we're looking to West Jordan to do is to provide or post a Class A notice for 30 days. And then, of course, you can post it on your website, word of mouth, that sort of thing. The only caution there is that applications have to come into the AOC. If they go to your HR, then they'll get lost and not considered. And I'm not saying HR would lose them. I'm just saying, we, we have to vet them at the AOC, run the background checks and do all of that for them to make the nominating commission pool. The nominating commission is comprised of five people. So one of those is appointed by the county executive here in Salt Lake County. Another one appointed by the municipalities. I don't know if the mayors all get together and have lunch or if this is a cog or whatever.
I wanted to ask you about that.
You weren't involved in the last one, huh? And then there's another one that's appointed by the county bar association. And the good news is these three members are already in place. So we've got that much of a head start. What West Jordan gets to do is appoint two other people to that nominating commission to, to round out the, the selection committee. And, and of course, you all do whatever you want, but what I typically recommend is that the court administrator and the city manager make for a really good pair. But there might be other options that make more sense to you.
Did you misspeak? Did you mean the, the city administrator and the court administrator?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The city administrator and the city manager, two different people. We only have one.
That's it. I'm thinking of Corbin. If that, if that clarifies anything. So with the nominating commission put together, like I said, they, they meet at least twice. And in getting that meeting on the calendar, it can be quite challenging, but once we do finally get together, they go over every application that meets minimum qualifications. That's another thing that my office does. And for Murray, I think there were well over 20. South Salt Lake, Salt Lake City, we typically get somewhere between 20 and 30 applications for a position that's full-time like this one.
Are they typically people that have been judges or do you have half and half, where some are judges that want to move? As far as applications go?
It's pretty rare actually to get a judge who's already got a position somewhere unless they're in a part-time position and they're looking to get a full-time position.
Majority of the people are people that haven't been.
Or knew. Correct, yeah. So then the second time they get together, they interview candidates. And as, as I mentioned before, there might even be a third meeting if we get negative comments back and they feel like they want to get together in person to deliberate whether or not to advance that name. It's very rare that a nominating commission doesn't have negative comment to consider. And it's also very rare that that name doesn't get advanced anyway. So oftentimes with, with candidates like this, someone out there, you've got a beef to grind. And so we'll, we'll get negative comments back, but that doesn't necessarily fatal to their candidacy. And so at that point, after we get through the negative or public comment period, then all the materials go out to Mayor Burton. He has 30 days to do whatever due diligence he wants and figure out who he ultimately wants to recommend to the city council. And then you all have 30 days beyond that to ratify his decision. Doesn't mean he has to take 30 days and it doesn't mean you have to take 30 days. But once you've made your decision, I'm notified in writing. We give the new judge orientation. And the judicial council certifies your selection with any luck. Again, I don't speak for them. And then the, the judge takes the oath of office and is ready to take the bench and start hearing cases, so. That is quite, that's in a nutshell, but let me take your questions now. By statute, we have to forward at least three. And I recommend to the nominating commissions that they go with something more like four or fives. Because if for whatever reason, one of those three had to be eliminated, then we'd need to start all over because we wouldn't have the minimum that we needed to send. So four or five names typically come to, to the mayor. If we send much more than that, then I don't know that the nominating commission's really been that helpful, right? So try to narrow it down to something about that size.
So I'm going to ask about timing. Obviously, the judge is going to retire. Do we have a, for a certain date? Is it January 1st?
My announced date was January 10th, which I gave to Jim back in July. The six-month period could start, but because we're getting along so late, I've told Corbin that that date is negotiable.
All right. So you're, you're willing to stay until we get a new judge if we decide to keep the court?
Depends on how long you drag your feet. Six months? No.
So what I, so what I say, so here's the timing thing I'm asking. When do we need to make the decision to make the option? Like, do we make it next week or?
Right.
You, you can do it tonight. For example, the city code already calls for a justice court and to maintain a justice court. So if you want to just replace a jur, judge, you just need to like tonight, say, this is the floor, so you want to go. And we, we can start the process probably tomorrow because there's no code changes. Everything else that you decide to do will add to that. But maybe I can talk a little bit about a judge pro temp that fills in if, for example, if the January 10th date is firm and we're more than, less than six months from that date.
Bring somebody like Taylor.
Well, what I, what I want to do is, is minimize the gap between Judge Coons leaving and your new judge taking over. And, and that's, that's the challenge. You all, whoever the temporary judge would be, you all would have to approve that. It's not something that I can just pull off a list and put on the bench. It's your decision temporarily as much as it.
But you can use somebody like Chris Mullins and he and Taylorsville.
Yeah, if you've got an ordinance or a resolution on the books that allows for, for judges like that to fill in on a temporary basis, then that's an option. But at the same time, i- if, if we really get going on this and all the stars align with the nominating commission and scheduling those meetings, you know, it can be done in as little as three or four months. It doesn't have to go six or seven. But the challenge that we've got ahead of us is that when we get into the holidays, it's going to be really hard to get people together. So if at all possible, we'd like to get the nominating commission to have its two meetings before that. And then what, you know, the mayor's 30 days and you're 30 days. That's stuff that can happen over the holidays easily enough.
And I think Paul is still online after the look, but Corbin had emailed each of you kind of an analysis of, of the courts. And those, that's a great analysis when you have a retiring judge, you'd at least have that discussion. However, like I mentioned, if the council desires to continue on with the courts, a simple action tonight would, I shouldn't say action, can do action here.
Yeah, we can. We can do procedure.
We can do procedure, but just letting it know what your desires are.
We can vote on anything as long as it's not an ordinance or a resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Because we don't have an ordinance or resolution for it. So we can vote.
We already, we already.
Vote on anything.
We already have the code in place if the council desires to continue.
Yes, that's the question is, me, I'd like to know better. If we continue the court, there's an obvious cost to the city. If we were to discontinue the court, would the city incur the same cost by referring cases to another jurisdiction? Or could the city save money in South Jordan? As I understood it, as I understand it, they chose to close their court because it would save the city money and they didn't feel like it was really serving their citizens. We need to have that discussion.
I have a big discussion on that. So, I mean, I mean, obviously, I've never been pulled over or arrested in West Jordan thinking this.
Good job.
But if I do get a traffic ticket, I don't want to go to West Valley or Midvale or Paramus. And like having a close, not for convenience, but I just don't want to travel apart and pay a ticket in my own city. Now, if I get a ticket in West Valley, yeah, I mean, I have to go to the West Valley Court, et cetera. So, so for me, I, I like having it here in our city. And I don't think the cost will be cheaper to go somewhere else. I still think, maybe it might be a little bit cheaper because they'll have less administration. But I think you're still going to be paying the fees that we're paying right now.
Well, you wouldn't have a building either, right?
But we already have a building that's paid for.
Right, but that would be another, that would be to Kent's point, that would be another thing, but I'm with you because I feel like as a resident, and, and I'm going to take it farther than, than a parking ticket. To me, if I'm involved in a domestic problem and that has to go to the court here, I, I don't want to go somewhere else. I want to stay close to home.
See, my, my thought is creating an interlocal agreement between a city near us with us being the 800-pound gorilla in the, face it, I mean, if, for hypothetically, let's just say we were, we wanted to approach Midvale. Midvale's going to go, we got 40,000 people, you got 117. We're going to pay, we're going to end up paying Midvale as much money as we're paying, as we're paying ourselves, I, I think. If we don't, if we can't come up with an interlocal agreement with Midvale or West Valley or Taylorsville, and I, Taylorsville is the same thing. If we don't do that, then everybody that has an issue with our, our cases would have to go to Salt Lake County Justice Court, if I understand the way the procedure works. Well, that means every, now that might be great when Salt Lake County moves to the Overstock Building that I heard that they're moving to. But until, until they move out of 21st.
Then you, you're right.
Y- y- you know, until they move to, out of the 21st South Building, everybody goes to 21st South. To me, that starts to adopt. And I will tell you, I'm, in some ways, it's a good model. In some ways, it's a terrible model. But if you go to San Diego County down, down in Southern California, they have one court in the entire county for every traffic ticket. And you get to travel to some god-awful courtroom in Northern San Diego County to, to, to go deal with all your traffic tickets. I don't want to see that. The other thing that I don't want to see is Casey's staff having to deal with the distance and the coordination issues that we would have to deal with, with another court. You know, I, I'm, I'm sure you're, Casey, I don't know that, but you guys are probably over in Judge Co, Court, Judge Coon's courtroom a lot.
We are.
You probably, you're probably in some sort of hearing. Your attorneys are probably in hearings five days a week across the street. What we, what I don't want to see is having our attorneys have to go, oh, I got a court hearing. They got to go to Salt Lake County. Then they have to, well, I got 20 minutes. Well, I'll try to tell the word, but we know how good that works. And it's, you know, here it's, I can go to work and I can come back to my office. I can go over to the court hearing and I can be back in my office in five minutes and I got everything set up. I don't want to lose, my personal opinion is I don't want to lose the continuity. I also don't want to have to deal with, honestly, I don't want to have to deal with the HR. We've got some great court people working for Judge Coons right now, at least though from what I understand. You could, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but every, every interaction that I've had with the court people upstairs, they're fantastic. And what I don't want to have to do is deal with and say, we got, what do we got, 12, 15 people? Whatever we got. I, I knew it was in the ballpark of 10. I don't want to have to deal with, well, if we're shutting down the court, then we gotta, and, and that's just, I don't even want to go down that road. And so I'm for, yeah, it's a subsidy of about 400K. If we, if we send our cases to Salt Lake County, they'll take them. They get to keep all the fines and we have all the issue. I'm okay with paying the 400K. It's, it's a current expense. A- a- as, as the way we do things, I'm okay with that, continuing things the way we are because we get most of the stuff offset with fines. I'm okay with that to make sure that we take care of our staff and our citizens and our attorney, you know, both the attorney's office staff, the court staff, taking care of that. I'd rather do that than try to do something that is just atypical. And, you know, it could be, it could be in a couple of years, justice court system's eliminated in the state anyway. You know, could, could turn into the circuit court system and, and the legislature will have to deal with grandfathering in justice court judges, and they probably will. And if that's what they do, that's great, but until now, I think status quo is the better way to stay. That's my opinion. Just follow the ordinance and do what we do.
Any other thoughts?
I'm in the, the same boat. I, I, I don't want to take away services from our residents. I'm more in line to want to make sure we're providing all the services we need for, it's not trying to pull someone away, so I'm pretty.
Yes, what, I, I had a conversation with certain South Jordan council member about this subject.
Do you know this guy?
Yes.
It was a guy. They have girls on there.
I know who he's talking of.
Anyway, they chose to eliminate their court because they found that majority of their cases were from outside the city and that the city was subsidizing that cases from outside the court or from outside their city. And they didn't feel like that was a, a good way to proceed for their city. Now, that's why I asked Corbin, what percentage of cases are we, are we accepting in West Jordan, outside the city? Uh, city boundaries and, and I believe it was around 50%. So that is a concern, but I, I think I'm in the minority and I'd be happy to accept the will of the council.
I would. Whatever you are, Vice Chair Lamb.
I'm not sure.
I would like to hear what both Chief Valentin and Judge Coons, if they would like to weigh in. They don't have to, but if they have an opinion, I would like to hear their opinion. If the body is okay with that.
Do you want to go, Corbin?
I'd be happy to address those. When I retire, it'll be almost 35 years that I've been doing this. And I take great pride in what we've been able to provide here in the service. If you look at the percentages and the income generated by the court or provided at the end of last week, in most years prior to the last four or five years, there's more income coming into the court than.
There's more income coming into the court than going out. And things have changed for a lot of different reasons to why the case loans are down. Next year, they could go up again and and be cash positive. So the. With you, the amount of money that it costs is, it's really not much considered what the benefit is. But as I look at it. And I've been contemplating. You all doing your due diligence. South Jordan, I think, made their decision without proper facts in front of them. They said thirty percent, but you know, did they factor in? Traffic tickets and how many of that was uh. Domestic violence and theft that occurred in their city. Because when when we were pulling the statistics, all we could do is do it by zip code of the defendant. And so I think Corbin pointed out very well in his memo from Sunday. That just because the defendant has an out of city zip code, uh, doesn't really mean that. While there's a city in that case, because the crime occurred here. Our police investigated the crime here. And we have a lot of domestic violence cases. And witnesses are are from here. Parties are from here, and so to to look at that comparison to South Salt Lake, I think that they were. They were erroneous in their facts and in their investigation. The end of the day, the bottom line is, is we're the third largest city in the state of Utah. We owe it to our citizens to have a justice court. And provide justices best we can.
Thank you, Judge.
Give you my economic take on it first and then just maybe shares the thoughts about how I feel that the justice court decision impacts. Not just the citizens, but frankly, a hundred and thirty three police officers. I think there is an impact there and the direct financial impact is that. I I can't speak from memory on this. It's about twenty. We'd add about four hundred and sixteen hours per year to our personnel costs, assuming. That our officers actually drove down to Twenty First South State. Here's the catch. You know, I I sat in a similar chair to Casey. I. I was a prosecutor for many, many years and I took my turn every three months doing a week of justice court. Most of the time I prosecuted in district court, but I I took a turn and I did the very best I could. When I had justice court, I walk into court with sometimes twenty five files. And I did my best to get through them. If I've got a Salt Lake County District Attorney employee that has got thirty five or forty files and. Goes into the court and isn't prepared, my officer is still sitting in the lobby for two to three hours and I. You, I get it. Are still bearing the cost of that. I'm responsible for the money. I get you pay it, but I'm responsible for watching my budget and I watch it pretty damn closely. Now, there's a, there's a cost savings to the to the police department if you do away with the court. Because we could probably just go to electronic security throughout the entire justice center. Not really excited to do that. Right now, I'm very fortunate to have. Principal Constable in the building who is is outward and friendly and visioned. And solves a lot of problems for the city and a lot of problems for the people and the the residents in the city that that you never hear about. Because he takes a personal interest. There's a personal touch here that can't be, that just can't be quantified. For example, earlier this year, Judge Coons brought to my attention a challenge with one of my officers' behavior in court. I'm not going to hear from a judge in the Salt County District Court, or excuse me, Justice Court. I'm just not, they're not going to call me up. Judge Coons is going to walk down the hallway and we're going to sit down and have a chat. The flip side of that is I've got my peccadilloes. I've got my things in this city. Ask my officers, they'll tell you. I don't want any garbage going on in that park. My grandkids plan to have park. And and that park's got to be spick and span and clean and. The right kind of people there, the right kind of people are people who have a problem for kids. If you ask Judge Coons, the the two things that I have told him that I never want to see bricks given on and and. He's pretty darn responsive to me. School zones, speeding in school zones and crosswalks. That may not seem like a big deal to you. I'm not going to get anywhere with other judges downtown who are serving a bunch of cities. That's the unquantifiable thing. Sometimes we make mistakes. Sometimes the police officers file the. The the wrong piece of paper, they get the charge wrong or whatever. And and I can literally walk out of my door. Go see the prosecutor and say, hey, we we got to fix this and then go ahead and see Judge Coons and say, hey, we got a little problem. The resident and never even sees that problem as opposed to them showing up in court and they'll sit there. And I'm not exaggerating when I say they may sit there for two or three hours before it's turned in court. That's just a reality. Only to to be turned away and to have to come again. It is true, and I've had a discussion with the police chief in South Jordan, a very extensive discussion. It is true that a lot of their cases were coming from people who don't live in in South Jordan. I don't know the exact numbers and I'm not particularly concerned about the exact numbers here. Because I'm more concerned about the cases such as domestic violence. I'm more concerned with the cases that impact the businesses. I I have an obligation, just like you do, to certain business owners. And the residents in this city and and when I've got someone who's involved in a domestic violence situation, typically it's not one and done. We'll be back there again and and a court. And the participation of the court in resolving that that issue is critical to improving the quality of life of one family. In my perspective, it was one set of parents that has kids in the home. One family in our city, and I think that I as the police chief and my officers can have a greater impact. In those situations now, you know, I get it, we're not social workers, but we are a little more socially active than most police departments. And I'm allowed to do that. I have the flexibility to do that. And while I'm done, talking to the justice court judge. Part of this, part of is the relationship that we have. We sort of a bear laker, you know, like me, so it's kind of like. You know, we're from the same neck of the woods. Um, we're both attorneys, you know. We can, we can talk to each other in all languages if we understand. But hopefully, of course, the police department will support whatever the council chooses to do, but I think for the interests of the. The citizens that that I serve. I think they're best served by coming to the justice center and and having their problems, challenges resolved there. Councilman Green. I was a young police officer when we went from circuit courts to justice courts, okay? I I remember the host days. I've been doing this forty two years. And I've been watching the justice court task force of the justice court form task force of the legislature. If you want to bet a steak dinner on a timeframe, I'll bet a steak dinner with you. It isn't going to be quick. With all due respect to you, Mr. Peters, maybe you got an inside track, but I don't think it's going to be quick. Does the council have any questions or any here?
I didn't say it was going to be quick. By the way, I I I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the constable you're talking about Courtney?
Yes, sir.
I know Courtney. I I worked with him at the constable's office when I worked with the constable's office thirty years ago. Courtney's a great guy.
Well, taking a straw poll, like I'm seeing.
We don't need to take a straw poll.
I'm seeing that at least five of us here. I'm assuming Kent's now sixth.
We, do we. Do we want a formal vote to say we want to proceed with what the ordinance is written?
What, do you want to? Do you want to just proceed with what's in code? I mean, it's already established.
It's already established.
Yeah, it's it's already in code. I've been reviewing it. We even have section one dash ten dash thirteen that allows for the temporary. Justice court judge, if you need that, everything's.
And I think you can do nothing.
We can do nothing and follow the code.
Yeah, but we will need to put something on the agenda for the governing body to select. Two people, which you're recommending is Corbin and the court administrator.
So without a roll call vote or a vote. Well, it looks like the six of us are saying, let's move forward with what we already have.
You can raise your hand and just move forward. That's what you want to do.
I don't think we need to vote.
Heard anything that says we want to change the current policy.
Okay, I think that's, that's where we.
Send out those emails.
Thank you all very much.
Get out of here on time.
You've got to move to, you need to adjourn this meeting and go into RDA. Okay.
We have an RDA.
Oh, I missed that one.
You want to vote on that?
You have to vote on it or you can declare it without objection.
But you already moved.
Yeah, you can say without objection.
Alright, then we will move, move to adjournment.